All right, good evening, everybody. If we can stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its worth.
All right, good evening. Welcome. It's a new year.
Happy New Year.
Yeah, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
We're going to start this evening with exemplary people, and we're going to be recognizing Mr. Dennis Cooper and Mrs. Jan Cooper.
Great, so if you'd join us right over here, and if I could have Dr. Greenwood and our student reps, and Donna, if you'd join us, too.
Mister and Mrs. Cooper have donated so much of their time and have been kind enough to give Massey students tractor rides all day this past Halloween. On behalf of all Massey student body, we are so grateful for all you've done for the Massey community, and we all enjoyed the festivities. It was a well-needed break to our busy days. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness. Oh, thank you very much. Thank you, honey. Thank you. That was so sweet. Oh, my goodness, how we get a Massey student.
I think we have to thank your recruiter.
Oh, my goodness, honey, look. We'll have to frame that. Oh, now, we can't frame it because we have to... Oh, okay, we're going to be buried with this. But not anytime soon.
So, two seconds. So, right around Halloween, myself and Mark and Julie were sitting around and sort of, I think, hatched a scheme to do some hayrides around Halloween, and Mark and I actually just drove, saw the tractor, and just drove up to their house and said, "If you're doing your time all day long, and give a thousand kids hayrides," and they spent an entire, what, three, four hours with us going around, and around, and around, and it was wonderful.
Round in circles.
It was great for the kid, and everyone's been, the kids are still talking about it, so we just want to make sure we thank them.
I think we ourselves are very impressed with the students at the school, too. I think every parent in the entire town should be proud of it.
Very proud, very proud. Massey is very special.
I think probably the administration should be thanked as well. Everybody here on Lincoln.
We'll take that, too.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Oh, we had a blast. We certainly weren't expecting. Very sweet. Very sweet. Thank you. Thank you so much. You know, he's one of eight kids, and every one of them graduated from here.
My best kid, though. That's my story. My mom's my best kid.
Wait, hold on one second. Jack, wait, 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 wait. Jack forgot the certificates.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. What do we do for non-core, y'all? He was wrong.
Great, thank you. We will move on to our report of the chairman, which I really don't have anything this evening. So, we will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Jerry. Do I have a second? Thank you, David. Jack, do you want to discuss the two notices of retirements that we've received?
Yes, we have two retirements. Pamela Benedict from Jockey Hollow Middle School. She's served there for 22 years as a sixth-grade teacher. She started out at Chalk Hill and is retiring at Jockey Hollow. And Barbara Lazarus, Monroe Elementary School teacher currently. She's been in the district 34 years, serving as a speech-language pathologist.
Great, thank you. Do I have any discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent agenda? Thank you. Motion passes. And I'm sorry, I failed to say that Shannon would not be here tonight, and we need a secretary. Alan? Thank you. All right, we will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons. Up first is our Massey School Board representatives.
Hi, so, thank you to the Massey PTC. Massey now has five new water bottle fillers that were donated after break, and so this has been really great because it has encouraged the use of reusable bottles for both staff and students, so we are very thankful for this addition. This Friday, Massey will be having an early dismissal because the teachers will be working on accreditation for the school. So, while the teachers are working hard, us kids will be able to leave the building around 12:00 o'clock to start the weekend. In terms of sports, for indoor track, senior Aiden McShane actually broke the school record for the 55-meter hurdle, so it's been really great. Freshman Grace Stevens high-jumped five feet, which is extremely impressive for a freshman. Most of, like, the seniors are jumping, like, 410, so it's really cool. For boys' basketball, they currently have a record of 2 and 4, and girls are 3 and 6.
Midterms begin on the 18th, and they're going till the 25th, and Dr. Greenwood has some, Dr. Greenwood and the guidance department have stress-relieving activities planned in between exam periods, like making slime, and there'll be snacks. I'm personally excited about the therapy dogs that will be coming in.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any other committee reports? All right, we will move on to public participation. All right, we will move on to the report of the superintendent.
I had a couple items. One is, there was an email that went out to board members from Cabe about a legislative breakfast that they have on, let's see, tomorrow morning, yeah, 7:30 in the morning. It was rather late notice.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I am going to try to get there. I don't know if there were any others that were available to attend, but just thought I'd bring that up. Okay. So, I'll keep you posted on how that goes. I'm hoping to make it there for a little bit of it. And then also, just regarding budget, I know when we get into that dialogue, one of the things we'll have to consider is the $300,000 shortfall and where to put that within the total budget. One of the things for us to consider is having that live within the insurance line as a shortfall, and then looking to make that up through any savings that we realize in the budget process from this point until adoption, things like the retirements we just picked up, and then also end-of-year monies after we take the $40,000 out for the TURF, both in this fiscal year as well as next fiscal year, using those three different means as a way to fill that hole within the budget. And those are the items that I have.
Great, thank you. We will move then on, does anybody have any questions, I'm sorry, for Jack, before we move on? All right, then we will move on to our presentations, and we're going to have a data presentation by Joe and Sheila on the student assessment results that are in front of you.
So, hopefully, last Thursday, everybody had a chance to take a look at the, or since last Thursday, we sent these out electronically first. You have the paper copies in front of you. Hopefully, everyone had a chance to go through the data booklets and preview them, because the purpose of tonight is not really to look through each individual page, but really to kind of highlight some of our areas of strengths and areas where we can improve on things. Most importantly, the purpose of tonight's presentation is to look at, you know, what we're doing instructionally with this data. That's the most important thing. The work that started this summer and, you know, that has continued throughout the year. So, you know, to kind of make this move as seamlessly as possible, too, you know, I know it's a presentation, but if you have any questions at any time, please, you know, stop me. There's a lot of acronyms in education in general, so please, raise your hands. I don't purport to have all the answers, but I'm pretty sure the army of people behind me would probably have the answers for us. Start out with kind of just a little bit of a helicopter view here. You know, the state of Connecticut compiles all of the S-Back scores, grades, rate, to rate, and, you know, helicopter view, our kids fare pretty well on standardized assessments. In a very competitive regard, you see where we are in ELA, ranked seventh in our DIRG, 18th in the state, top 10% there. And just so you understand, too, we're in DIRG B, if, I know you might have heard that before, it's our demographic reference group, our district reference group, you know, that puts us into towns that are similar to ourselves, towns like Trumbull and Dootown, Fairfield in this area, Avon, Simsbury, Farmington, and other parts of the state. There's nine DIRGs in the state, A through I. A is kind of your Gold Coast towns, or New Canons, or Dariens, and whatnot. Math, scores are a little bit lower in math, you know, but still, still pretty strong. We're still in the top 20% in the state, and we'll address some of this stuff as we move along. This next slide is a pretty important slide. It's one that I'm going to kind of come back to, and I'm not going to go through each of the grades in the booklet, but this one kind of does a really good job of highlighting it, and it really does a really good job of highlighting, you know, where we're strong and where we've looked to improve this year. So, you'll see, and this is the first time you'll see this slide. I think you see it at least two other times. But if you look at our outcomes in the DIRG, it's pretty impressive, you know, where our strengths, you know, look at ELA, look at the elementary schools, second in the DIRG, first in the DIRG, eighth in the DIRG, 14th in the state, 15th, fifth in the state, 20th in the state. Very strong numbers there. Same thing if you look at math in the elementary schools, second in the DIRG, sixth, seventh, ninth, 23rd, 21st. Going to keep coming back to this slide because, you know, one of the things we spent a lot of time on this summer was looking at our middle school scores, where we, you know, we have identified that as an area where we can definitely improve, and we've got some really cool things happening, you know, this year, and we'll talk about that. You probably have heard throughout, you know, throughout your time on the board, these terms, formative assessment, summative assessment, and just to give you a quick overview, formative assessment is kind of that on-the-fly assessment that's done when a teacher's teaching. It's kind of that, you know, in the midst of instruction, teacher finding out, okay, I've got 16 kids in my class, who gets it? Okay, these eight kids get it. Who kind of gets it? These kind of four kids kind of get it. Who doesn't get it all? Maybe these four kids here. What are the adjustments I need to make to my instruction right now, on the fly, to make sure that those four that don't get it are caught up with everybody else? Summative assessment tends to be kind of those end-of-unit assessments, midterm exams coming up soon, S-Back, SATs, things like that. We looked at a lot of data this summer, and, you know, one of the arguments I think we would make as a district is that all data, in some ways, is formative. And, you know, the three questions we really asked ourselves this summer was, you know, what do we learn from the data? What are we going to do with that information? And then how are we going to know that it's, how are we going to know that it's working? And that's kind of the three questions that guided us, you know, as we worked throughout the summer into the year. You know, this is not a comprehensive list of all the assessments that are done in the district. This is a number of the, probably the more common ones that are done. You know, your S-Back test, the Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium, and your SATs tend to be those summative assessments. The other ones, the STAR test, the interim assessments, Columbia Teachers College, on-demand writings, those ones are more of the formative assessments that are done, you know, at the class level on a daily basis. So, we had all this data this summer, and, you know, quite honestly, you know, thanks to Jack's leadership, you know, we were trying to look at the data and then look at the research, and what does the research tell us? And one of the things that, you know, Jack guided us to was this guy, John Hattie. John Hattie wrote a book, Visible Learning, and in his book, it's really, it's a meta-study. It's really, it's a compilation of, I think, tens of thousands of educational studies over the past 30 or 40 years to look at what are the most important factors to student achievement? And the number-one factor is this concept of collective teacher efficacy. It's this idea of, if you can get teachers working collaboratively, it's the idea of getting teachers to work collaboratively together or collectively to improve the outcomes of every individual student. If everybody can buy into all students succeeding, that's the most important factor. And Hattie looked at 252 factors. 235, this is almost impossible to read, but these are all the factors on the side right here. 235 of them have a positive outcome. The ones that have negative outcomes are things like truancy, things like suspension, you know, it kind of makes sense. But I know you can't really see it, but I just wanted to show you. At the top of this list is this idea of collective teacher efficacy. It's the most important thing that we can do with our kids. So, we have three very different schemas in the Monroe Public Schools, and probably in all schools around the state. It's not that we're that different. At the elementary school level, you know, a lot of the onus of responsibility is on the teacher. That teacher's responsible for the 18 to 22, 24 kids they have in front of them at any given time. You know, the schema's a little bit different at the middle school and high school level, where you have teams and departments, and any given teacher may have somewhere between 80 and 120 students at any time. But the question that we ask ourselves is, how can we implement this idea of collective teacher efficacy at all three levels? What's the best way to do that? And that was the work that, you know, that's kind of the idea that guided us throughout the summer. Second time, same slide. Okay, I told you I was going to come back to this. I'll come back to it a few times. Again, if you look at, where do we do it well? Collective teacher efficacy is done really well at the elementary level, okay? So, what are they doing there? How come, you know, what's happening at the elementary school level? And it's really, this has been a really cool experience for me because I've, you know, always been exposed to the high school. But one of the first things, you know, I had the pleasure of learning more about is this win time. When I was in the high school, I thought, when I used to hear, you know, my colleagues behind me talk about win time, I thought, you know, isn't that like you're winning at something? I didn't realize it was W-Y-N-N. It's so appropriately named, what do you need now? What does a kid need now? Each of the elementary schools has a 30-minute block every day where kids are broken up into win groups where they can target specific areas or, you know, have some opportunities for enrichment. So, if you look at this, and it's kind of difficult to see here, you know, this was a, I said, this is actual data. I'm going to show you a lot of data. We redacted the students' names and the teachers' names, but this was a grade-three-level meeting that I was able to sit in on, and, you know, this was earlier in the year, and they were looking at a couple of ELA passages. This was, I think, Reddy Fox, and this is Spying on Alligators. And what you see here is, you know, how the kids scored, it's really difficult to see from there, but how they scored on the multiple choice, the open-ended, and then what their total score was. Same thing on the other side. And you see the green, the yellow, and the red. The green means those students are performing above what the teachers consider to be the benchmark. The yellow means, you know, they're on the border, and red means, you know, they're behind a little bit. So, from that data, excuse me, they then will, they then take the kids and break them up into win groups for a period of time, maybe a week, maybe two weeks, and you'll see here that, you know, the students during that win time will go to different people. So, some of the students that needed the most help will go to the person who specializes the most in ELA. So, you see a small group going with the reading consultant, some other groups going with the reading specialist, and then students going to the teacher, the classroom teachers in the grade level, and to the special education teacher in that grade level as well. Doesn't mean that those are necessarily special education students, and, like I said, you know, some of these are for remediation, and some of them are for enrichment. You know, if kids are zooming ahead, let's get them higher. Let's do a read together, a read-along, and do a book talk. So, it's really, you know, this is for all students. And, you know, spoiler alert for later on, but the, you know, this is, you're going to start to see some graphs and some charts that look similar because, you know, one of the ideas is, we know we do it well at the elementary school, so how can we try to emulate that later on? Another kind of tough chart to read, but even with the interventions in win time, there's still those students that need additional support beyond that. And as a result of that, a lot of teachers will then, you know, recommend their students go to the SRBI, the Scientifically Research-Based Intervention Team, oftentimes led by the reading consultant in the schools that I visited. I sent in a couple of these meetings. You know, the principals were involved, the classroom teacher, guidance counselors, depending on who the needs of the student, could be the school psychologist and some other folks as well. You know, they look at the strengths of the kids, they look at the needs of the kids, what are they hoping, I'm sorry, what are the targeted skills that they're trying to improve here? And then from that, for each of these kids, they look at, what is the baseline data telling us? All those assessments that I talked about before, and this isn't about testing our kids to death, please understand this, too. You know, some of those summative assessments, they're long things, but most of our kids in the form of assessments, you're talking about, you know, quick hitters, you know, five, 10 minutes, 20 minutes usually at the most, but I think some of this is our assessments. But what is the baseline data telling us? What do we, what's the objective? What do we want the kids to be? What intervention strategies are we going to use? What's going to be our definition of success? When are we going to come back? We're going to come back, you know, for this was, this is an example from a student. I just redacted the names. You know, we're going to come back in six to eight weeks. That's great. Well, then, who's going to monitor, and how frequently are they going to monitor in between those six to eight weeks? And like I said, I think the, you know, the results kind of speak for themselves for what's happening at the elementary schools. So, with that being said, you know, I really have to give a ton of credit to Jack Ceccholini, Leiantis, Laura Marr, the instructional leaders, and really the entire staff at Jockey Hollow because, you know, they looked at this data this summer and they, you know, kind of asked themselves this really critical question, is, you know, how can we maximize the two most important resources that we have to improve student outcomes? And what are the two most important resources we have? Time and people. How can, how can we do that? And they did that through the utilization of what they know at the high school as kids' time, very similar to this concept of win time at the elementary school. But let me just tell you, and Jack, you know, jump in if I misrepresented it all, but kids' time in the past, you know, in previous years, was a time for, it was a half-hour every other day. In the past, what it was, was it was a time for kids to use as, you know, maybe a study hall, maybe, you know, start their homework for the night, for that night, perhaps they engage in some silent sustained reading. They could have gone for extra help if they needed it. Maybe if they were out sick, they went in for makeup work or whatnot. Not necessarily bad things, but not really targeted to what they needed. You know, going back to that concept of win time, what do you need now? So, again, a credit to these guys for really looking at this time and saying, okay, how can we better utilize this time? So, what they did, and remember, I said, at the middle school level, it's about the teams. So, they started using their team meetings. The teams meet once per cycle, they run a six-day cycle at the middle school, so once every six days, they get together as a team. It's facilitated by an administrator. They look at the students. I wrote solely academic, I shouldn't say solely academic. I meant to change that. Primarily, their academic needs that they have, and then they plan where the kids are going to go during the kids' time, much like they do in the elementary school, where they plan where they're going to go during that win time. Is it going to be to the classroom teacher? Is it going to go to the, is it going to be the interventionist? Are they going to go for enrichment? So, again, you know, this is, you know, kind of actual data here from one of the, I forget which team it was at Jockey Hollow, and again, this is earlier in the year. You know, this is just a picture, but, you know, these would be the student names. This is how they did on the S-Back the previous year. You know, there's a social studies benchmark that the students do. There's also assessments that they had done through the STAR program that we participate in, in ELA and in math. So, they meet as a, they meet as a team facilitated by Jack Lee, Laura, or one of the instructional leaders, and then they plan out where those kids are going to go during their, during their kids' time. And what's nice, again, this is just a picture, but on their actual data sheet, this is actually hyperlink, so if I clicked on Student C, for example, I would get that student. This is a sample student intervention line. Now, we're looking at some targeted support for a kid, and, like I said, in the cycle, this is, you know, the kid is going to go see his ELA teacher on this day to work on reading for understanding. He's going to meet with his math teacher because he needs some help with order of operations. He's going to meet with the math interventionist to go over operations and instructions. So, ELA teacher, math teacher, ELA, you know, so on and so forth. So, really, it's been, you know, how do we, you know, make that paradigm fit into the middle school as best we can with the existing resources we have? So, that's probably been the biggest change there. And again, this is not a comprehensive, this presentation's not a comprehensive list of everything that's going on. That's in the back of the folders. But, you know, one of the, one of the really nice pieces, you know, this idea of collective teacher efficacy, to me, also breeds ownership, and I think this is a huge testament to the staff at Jockey Hollow. You know, we go back to those scores, they weren't very satisfied with the scores they had, and this was a concept that the teachers, Jackie Delvecchio and Abby Carey came up with, much similar to at the high school before the SATs. We sponsor an organization to come in and do an SAT boot camp to kind of jazz the kids up, give them some last-minute tricks and tips before the SAT. Jackie Delvecchio and Abby Carey are preparing to do a cross, an S-Back crossfit, and basically, identify students based on last year's S-Back scores and this year's interim assessments, and take the five weeks leading up to the S-Back and work with them on either ELA or math after school. At the high school, you know, I apologize, a couple of these slides should look familiar. To me, they just kind of make sense. You know, this district and the Lord made a conscious effort a few years ago to, you know, offer the SAT suite of assessments for our students, and that's always been great because, for me, it was always frustrating as a high school principal. We had kids in 11th grade. We didn't really have any, we didn't have any data in between 9th grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. So, now we have the suite of assessments, the PSAT 9, the PSAT 10, the PSAT, and the SAT, and, you know, we can kind of progress-monitor kids over time, use the instructional planning reports that come with it. Again, I apologize, you've seen this, you've seen this before. This is just the score scale alignments that just show that, you know, according to the College Board, a student that took the PSAT 9 on any given day, if he or she had scored a 500 on a given section, that if they had sat for the PSAT that day, they would have scored a 500, and if they had sat for the SAT that day, they would have scored a 500. You'll notice that the scales in the PSAT, the SAT, and the PSAT 9 are a little bit different. The SAT goes up to 800, the PSAT to 760, and the PSAT 9 to 720. That's only to reflect the complexity of the content in the test. Obviously, when you get to the SAT, you can, you can offer a little bit more complex content. All right, this is a, this, I hope it makes sense to you because it really makes sense for me, and I started looking at it, when I started looking at our data like this, it just really made sense, and I was able to look at, you know, kind of trend data over time. So, what we have here, this is last year's graduating class. What we have here is how they did on the PSAT 9, which they didn't take because when they were freshmen, we hadn't offered the PSAT 9 yet. This actually, this senior class is the first group to take the whole suite of assessments. But what we, what we're looking for, remember, we talked about that score alignment scale? What we're looking for is growth within the cohort from one test to the, one test to the next, and we do see that growth, you know, within the cohort, which is great. We see it in this, this next group right here, our current seniors, right here. What we like to, what we like to look at next is, are we seeing growth over time? Are we seeing growth from one cohort to the next? And for the most part, we do. I'll point out a couple of our blips here, but if you look at, like, the PSAT 9, our current seniors now, we're at 969, the current juniors at 977, the current sophomores at 1,000. So, it's nice to see growth within the cohort and then growth over time. Last year, we saw our first blip. I want to come back to the SAT scores in a second, too, but last year, we saw the first blip from one cohort, you know, we had seen growth from cohort to cohort, and this one was actually kind of interesting. From this group to this group, we saw a 20-point decrease, and we talked about that last year as a staff. We said, all right, well, how can we target those students and, you know, try to, you know, address that situation? And you can see, you know, this junior class kind of closed that gap. There was, they were above this group about eight points this year, dropped 20 points this year, and then have closed that gap back up with the PSAT this past October. So, you know, those are the kinds of things that we're looking at. Overall, this is kind of the big number, you know, we can compare that next to other schools in the state and in our DIRG. You'll notice first and foremost that there's a little slippage here from, this is last year's, I'm sorry, yeah, last year's senior class to this year's senior class, down about 11 points, but very much in line to what happened around the state. That kind of startled me at first when I saw, oh, my God, we were down 11 points, but the mean average around the state, throughout the whole state, was 12 points. So, it was very much in line with what was going in around the state. When I looked at the sub-scores in both ELA and in math there, you know, we were off the DIRG average in ELA by five points, we're off the DIRG average by about 12 points in math. You've heard me say this, this will be probably the third year I have it. I'm not, you know, those numbers don't frighten me tremendously because Kevin would correct me. points, but very much in line to what happened around the state. That kind of startled me at first when I saw, oh my God, we were down 11 points. But the mean average around the state, throughout the whole state was 12 points. So it was very much in line with what was going in, going in around the state. When I looked at the, the sub-scores in both ELA and in, and in math there, you know, we were, we're off the Derg average in ELA by five points. We're off the Derg average by about 12 points in math. You've heard me say this, this will be probably the third year I have it. I'm not, you know, those numbers don't frighten me tremendously because Kevin would correct me if I was wrong, but, you know, I think 10 points is about getting one question right. So you're, you're about, you're within, I call it, you're within striking distance. You're within one question on average of, of being at the Derg average. It's a snapshot. It's one thing, one thing in time. So again, I wanted to make this more about what do we do, you know, what do we do with this information? You know, what kind of work comes out of the data that we get? You know, we don't want to just teach to the test, and I think that's really important, and I can't overstate that enough. The tests are important, it's a snapshot. But, you know, at times if the test is testing something good, it's, it's not a bad thing. How can we embed it in our curriculum? And in math, sometimes, I don't have a math example here because in math, if you just think of it conceptually, it's pretty easy to think of. And math, if you're doing, you know, linear inequalities, or if you're doing probability and statistics, you can just pop those questions in. In ELA and, you know, in social studies, Ian and Mike work pretty closely in trying to embed tasks within the given curriculum. So when our students are reading a separate piece, they're answering a quick 10, you know, a 10-question quiz on a certain section of a separate piece. You know, this question is very much like a command of evidence question in the SAT. This is a very, is very similar to a vocab in context. So how can we get our kids used to those things without, you know, totally, you know, diverting from the curriculum? Look familiar? It's the third time. Okay? You know, and, you know, I think when, when we, when there's an area of need, we want to hit it head-on. And we talked about this group right here. You know, we know we had a cohort that really struggled. We know we have a group of students here who didn't do that, didn't do that well in eighth grade. Now they're in ninth grade. And so, you know, the questions that we challenge ourselves with is, so what are we going to do about it? How best can we implement collective teacher efficacy at the high school level? And you're going to start to see kind of organically what has grown out of it. Things are starting to look really similar. Remember those, those grade level meetings in the elementary school and the, the team meetings at the middle school? Starting to look at, again, at the high school, it's, it's departmentalized. And we have here some work done by, you know, Mike and his group in English. Students, when they have, when they have free periods, whether or not they're receiving some sort of special education or 504 services. Again, this was earlier in the year. You know, what was their Sback level? What was their first benchmark in ELA is English Language Arts? What was their first baseline in social studies? And here, these guys actually also, you know, were contacting home to talk about intervention strategies for the kids. It's a little bit more difficult at the high school. You know, as you can see, what they did here is they kind of, you know, what Mike did was, you know, when are, when can we, you know, we don't have a kids' time or a win time built into the schedule. When can we meet, when can we get to these kids? When can we offer some other interventions besides tier one and two strategies that may be happening in the, in the classroom? And so they put that here. But you'll notice, here's some of our limitations. You know, no free period, no free period. And, you know, you see that, you know, I want to say frequently, but there are times when that happens. So, you know, Jake has already started to talk about it. We have a, we have a schedule that worked really well for us in the, you know, 10 years ago, 15 years ago, when we switched the schedules over. But we're seeing some limitations to it. So some talks have already started to begin, begun to reimagine the high school schedule. How can we offer some of these, you know, these periods where we can, you know, offer remediation or enrichment to kids? You know, so based on the data that they collect here, just really quickly, you know, Mike and the English department have created a, an intervention schedule to work on, to work with kids throughout the year. If you look at, you know, one of the pieces here, oh, I got to click on it. Just so you get a sense of what they're doing, and it's going to be very similar in math as well. You know, as they're, as they're working throughout the year, they're going to do, students at it may be assigned to the literacy lab, are going to do a piece on Yellowstone Wolves. And when they do, they read, they read an excerpt. Again, we're not trying to test the kids to death. Look at this, one, two, three, four questions, submit to Google form. The kids do answer the four questions and then they, and then that, that information gets submitted instantly. What's nice is the, the literacy lab interventionist has it immediately. Mike has it immediately. The English teacher has it immediately. So, you know, where are the kids, you know, where are the kids continuing to struggle? How do I get out of this?
Hit escape.
All right, hit escape.
F-11.
What's that?
F-11.
F-11? No, that's not good. Okay, thank you. I might need to do that one more time.
No problem.
So that's what they're doing in English. Okay. Starting to look familiar. These are, you know, this is math. Little bit, little bit different looking, but a lot of the same type of information here. When Kevin and Jim in math and science in their department start to look at kids, you know, same thing, student names, are they receiving special education services? They also actually looked at, are they English language learners? Looked at their Sback levels from last year. What's, what's hard to, if I could just explain this for a second, some of these areas that are blacked out is because we know that the students who are struggling the most are primarily located in our Algebra I classes. They're either, they're either at the Algebra I 20 level class or the Algebra I 30 level class. So you notice that if a kid has a, has a benchmark score here, it's because they're not in this class and vice versa. If they have a benchmark score here, it's because they're in this class, not this class here. Same.
What does that mean?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What does that mean?
Which part?
Algebra.
Oh, okay. It's just, the Algebra I 20 level is, you know, kind of our college prep level Algebra I for freshmen. The majority, Tev, the majority, I'd say probably two-thirds of our incoming freshmen probably take geometry.
Yeah. Or, or higher.
Or, or even higher, or Algebra, or Algebra II. And maybe a little bit less than a third will take Algebra. So the 20 level is the higher of the two Algebra I courses. You have Algebra I 20 and Algebra I 30 level. So it's, it's the, kind of our, our most academic level right here.
Okay.
Okay? What we call academic in terms of kids that probably need the most support. So really similar, looks really similar to what Mike's doing in English. From this, Kevin and the math department have put together, you know, kind of a, an intervention schedule for the, for the interventionists to look at. Again, very similar idea of what's going on in English. It's nice, they can coincide it nicely in January, we're doing inequalities. Here's some questions for the kids when they're in the math lab, you know, same type of thing. Here's four or five questions, very SAT-like. Kids, kids answer them, submit them, and bam, you know, we've got, you can go ahead and take it back out, Jack. You know, the kids, kids take the assessments and, you know, the math teacher has the information. Kevin has the information, the interventionist has the information, and they can use that data to continue to, you know, make adjustments in curriculum. That's most of the SAT stuff. Man, this looks much bigger when it's sitting on my screen at my office. And, you know, geez, even this, I should make this a little bit, a little bit bigger because a lot of this stuff is, it's all right in the book, in the pages, if you can't see it. I can barely see it. You know, we've been, we continue to be pretty excited about our, our AP numbers. A lot of our kids are taking a lot of tests this past year. 336 kids take 630 tests, the most tests we've ever taken at Massey. And that's pretty cool. 336, it's not the most kids we've had just by a small number, but that's also in the face of some decreasing enrollment at the high school level. And then the number of kids who have gotten, who received a three-year higher, 489. That's awesome. And it's fine that they all don't get a three-year higher. We want them all to get a three-year higher. But the fact that kids are challenging themselves to the highest level they can, that's what we want to see. You know, we talk about trying to ingrain persistence and perseverance in kids, you know, when they challenge themselves by taking, you know, advanced placement courses or other college credit courses through the University of Connecticut. You know, that, that's great. And I'll kind of come back to that at the, at the very end. You know, last year was the first year that the state recognized and actually encouraged students to strive for the seal of biliteracy. That would be in demonstrating proficiency in a, in a second language, thanks to Lisa Peterson and her leadership in world language. I know she talked a lot about the seal of biliteracy last year. Kids who get the seal of biliteracy by, they take the, what's called the Apple Test, the Assessment of Performance Toward Proficiency in a Language. They take the Apple speaking test here at Massey. From that, they could be eligible if they score high enough to earn the seal of biliteracy, but they have to take three other tests in reading, listening, and writing. Last year, we had 24 kids, you know, earn the seal of biliteracy in Arabic, French, Latin, and Spanish. I think we are on track to have even more than that this year, and we haven't even administered the Apple Test yet, I don't believe, at least.
Not yet, Mark.
Yeah. So it's really, what's also impressive is these 24 kids, it's, it's really short money. It's like $5 a test, but they paid for it themselves. They wanted to get the seal of biliteracy on their transcript. Pretty cool thing. Kind of zip through the next couple of, of slides here. We've had a, you know, our class profile is pretty strong. We're constantly in the high 80s, low 90s of our students who, you know, tend to go on to a, to a two-year.
Joe, don't, don't zip off that, that one yet. I got a question.
Oh, good, good. The, this is our graduate, I'm sorry, where our kids go after, after high school. You see a large majority of our kids go on to a two-year, a four-year school. Go ahead, Joe, what's your question?
Can you explain what's included in the category of a vocational school?
That would be your Porter and, I'll give you examples. That'd be your Porter and Chester's, your Lincoln.
Your hairdressing schools at Ricky's.
Ricky's. Yep, yep, yep. Thank you. That's a great question. Another thing that haunts me, I could probably, you know, every year it's always less than 1% because I think Mark, Julia, and I could tell you who the kid was almost every year. It haunts me to this day, some of the kids that, you know, almost got to the finish line and didn't. It really, to this day, you know, it bothers us. But, I mean, I know there's hundreds of schools around the state that would die for those kind of numbers.
Joe, can I just, you don't have to go back. I just want to ask, ask a follow-up. Out of the 36 who don't go to a four-year college or don't go to a vogue, do we offer any training or placement career-wise of what they can do once they leave us? Like, they're not going to college, they're not going to Ricky's. So I realize they answer the job force. I realize we track them, but do we offer anything as they're leaving?
Is Ian here? I don't know if Ian would be able to. I'm not sure in terms of what we offer them.
Can we have the transition college fair and the vocational?
Oh, that's true. Yep.
Career fair and the transition planning.
Yeah.
Both through special ed and then also through regular ed.
Yeah, that's true. Thank you.
That answer. Thank you.
I told you if I had the answers, they would. You know, just going back at our, our graduation numbers, again, you know, Jack, Jack said it at the executive, executive summary of the budget. You know, you come through the Monroe Public Schools, you're going to have an opportunity, you're going to have any opportunity that, that you really want. Our kids get into the most competitive schools, look at 54 acceptances with last year's class. You know, those are, you know, some of the best schools in the country, including the Ivy Leagues. This one is kind of interesting. When I was talking about AP and how we want kids to persevere, you know, the, the state of Connecticut, and I'm not exactly sure where they get all their data here, but it's, it's actually really interesting. These two trend lines show, these are, the red is the, how many, how many percent of the kids entered college from one year to the next? And the, the, the data is a little dated because it has to go, it has to go back a little bit. So this is the most updated data we have. But, you know, it's great that we have 88% of the kids going on to a two or four-year school. But the, you know, it's, it's not good if they're flunking out or they're dropping out or whatever, and that's not what's happening. You look at our kids, we have a 94.7% persistence rate, kids that are going back into their second year of college. You know, research shows if you go back to your second year of college, you're that much more likely to graduate within your four-year cohort. I, I talked a lot, like I said, really, you know, our, our work this summer has been around, you know, really, you know, taking a good, hard look at the data. We looked at it from a school level. We looked at it from a subject level. We looked at it by teacher. We looked at it, you know, every which way but sideways all summer. And really, you know, we kept coming back to this, you know, this idea of collective teacher efficacy. How can we take advantage of those, like I said, those two most important resources? You know, time and people. And like I said, we'll probably continue to see some more changes as time goes on. Like I said, we're, we're starting to begin those talks at the high school about, you know, how can we, you know, how can we adjust ourselves here? I know the national championship game is about ready to kick off.
Nice job.
So I do, Joe.
Yeah. Okay.
So, math. So I think that's something that you're, you're looking a lot at, right? Okay. So when we look at the, the math scores from fifth grade into middle school, there's the drop-off, right?
Yes.
Clearly. So what are we looking at in terms of, what are the factors that attribute to that? And how do we, like, I think it's important to determine what the root cause is before we can try to implement a plan to, to fix that. So what are we, what are we assessing there and what we think it could be related to?
Do you want to add something to that?
Yeah, tell me next, come up there.
Sure.
I think first is what Joe talked about, trying to get to intervene with these kids at a small group. In the past, we have our two math interventionists, actually we had one. We increased at Jackie Hall the two math interventionists so that one focuses on a sixth grade, the other focuses on seventh and eighth grade. We find in the sixth grade especially, we see a lot of kids who, who need more intervention. So we've had them go into the classroom more and also pull out kids. The kids' time is an opportunity for the teachers to work with these kids. And a lot of it also has to do with exposing them to the type of questions they'll see on the Sback. A lot of the questions they see might ask for multiple answers and not just one. And when I've looked at the data and looked at some of the questions and wondered, well, how could they have gotten a small percentage of getting that right? What I found a lot of times, it might have been a true-faults question where there was three truths and a false. And what they did, they might have had two truths and two faults, and that made the question completely incorrect. So they've understood the question, they had an idea, but maybe along the way, they had trouble just with one part of that, and they, they lost some credit for it. So those are, we're focusing on the types of questions, exposing them to any of the topics that they've seen. The other thing we did in the past was we'd look at the tests and go, all right, well, it looks like geometry they might need some support in. So we'd focus a lot on geometry that year. We'd see a geometry go up, and maybe statistics would go down. So, oh, let's focus on statistics, let's push that up, then geometry. So now we're really looking at the whole test in the whole. We're using the interim assessments and saying, all right, let's focus now on ratio proportions. Next, we're going to, we're doing geometry, let's focus on geometry. We'll use that interim to kind of get an idea of how they're doing with the types of questions, our Sback-type questions within that unit.
But everybody says, don't teach to the test, right? Everybody says that. So what, do you, do you have confidence in the curriculum as a whole that it's going to cover everything that we need to do to be successful and not just teaching to the test? Because I know the teachers don't want to teach to the test, right?
I agree. I don't think we're teaching towards the test. I think we're using, for geometry, math questions are good questions and they fit within our curriculum. So I think what we're doing is exposing them to those type of questions within the curriculum. We're not shutting down curriculum and saying, all right, let's now just S-Back, 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 S-Back. We're teaching racial proportions, and then let's bring this type of question, which might have multiple answers or multiple, and it's very similar to the type of questions we've seen. So we're not really going towards that. We're just trying to expose them to what they'll be familiar with once they see the test. Overall, in terms of curriculum, it's common core base, it follows along with what the S-Back assesses. We do run into a problem with math that we can't get to everything by the time we give the test. And so we try to push that test as far into the year as we can, so that we get to some things. But I know, you know, because we have another month to go, there are some things we just can't get to that will be on the S-Back.
And so what do you think the difference is though, Kevin, is in terms of how the fifth grade, fourth grade, third grade, whatever, the, the elementary schools are doing on that test with the same type of schedule, as opposed to how the, the middle school's doing?
Well, keep in mind, the things that Joe was sharing are brand-new this year. So the way that kids' time is being used and the way that whole design.
So win was there for elementary, but kids' time was not there for.
Kids' time has been there, but not being used in the way that it was described this year. Jack, do you want to speak to it?
Yeah.
Wait, you want to come up? Sure, why don't you come up?
At least I was loud enough. Yes, here are your questions, and I think I could speak a little bit to it. I think we know areas that the kids have been struggling in. I think the difference is, I'll try and use a simple example, using some of the content that Kevin mentioned. Let's take geometry, for example. In the past, we would examine the data and find out that, and I'm making off numbers now as an example, 60% of a given grade of kids didn't succeed as well as we would, at the level we want, in geometry. And so we would look at the sequence of how we were delivering instruction and alter that in order to provide an opportunity for those kids to demonstrate better on geometry. What we've been doing now is digging further down into what it is the kids are struggling in, and very specifically, who are the kids? And now giving those particular kids what they need, rather than just changing a sequence of instruction for everyone. We may still change a sequence if we think it's going to help everyone, but we're digging into very specifically who those kids are that demonstrated a difficulty. Once we see who they are, we can even see further what may be causing that. It may not, the root cause may not be geometry. You mentioned the root cause. Root cause may not be the geometry. It may be something else within their math studies that's giving them a difficult time in showing up in geometry.
You're mentioning intervention, but, but when you talk about, like, sequencing, what do you mean by that?
The order, the timeline, the, the actual sequence of what we might deliver.
The curriculum?
Might be able to, right, we might be able to reorganize.
Finest the curriculum, so that it makes more sense.
Right, exactly.
What I think what Jack's getting at too is it would be reteaching something for all students versus if you've got, you know, a given element, let's say it's math applications, word problems, and it's 40% of the class that needs, that needs assistance, you'd take that 40% out into a small group, rather than reteaching everybody, which is very inefficient, especially when you do that over and over. So this reutilization of kids' time has been much more efficient at getting to the root causes for the specific student's needs.
And that kids' time is similar to the win time at the elementary?
Exactly. And we've had it in the schedule, and it provided, and Joe made a very good example, the difference, things that it has provided for, it has provided for assistance of students, but it hadn't been focused or structured as critically as it's being structured now in terms of meeting the needs of the individual students based on what the data shows.
And do you have the resourcing needed to do the kids' intervention?
Well, we could always use more resources. I'm not going to, we could always use more. But what, what the, what the kids' time provides, it's much like the win time, you've kind of stopped everything for that 30 minutes. So now you're using all the resources at your disposal. All of the teachers are now at your disposal. So we're actually able to reshuffle the students so that they can get, because if, if Jack Ceccholini and Kevin Welsh need math, even though we might, on a typical kids' time day, be with our homeroom teacher who is our language arts teacher, we can move.
And that's not the way it's structured at the elementary level, right? The kids get pulled out to go to a specific intervention teacher, or no?
The win time.
It would be a remix.
Like, if you have 60 kids, you know, in a grade level, or 80 kids, you take those kids, and if you have eight people at your disposal, you'll have the grade-level teachers, you'll have the reading people, you'll have the special ed people.
Everybody goes.
And they did, we did them up.
Based on what their needs are. Okay, so you're doing the same thing?
Very similar.
So the curriculum basically stops for the day, everybody focuses.
For the 30 minutes.
On what they need to.
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that is a big change for us this year. And there were a lot of, a lot of work that came with that, a lot of thank-yous, Joe, Jack, Jeff Seymour, the SILs.
It has been, it has been a real collaborative work of, from everyone, IELs, the teachers, because it's, it's a significant change for everyone.
Okay.
I mean, really, one of the things that Jack said about this is, you know, sometimes you have these downturns in data, and it makes you take a good, hard look at what you're doing. And that's in fact what happened with this.
The fact is, you have a plan, right? Have a plan to, to address it, so.
That's right.
Hopefully, we've created an opportunity out of it.
Yes.
Thank you.
David.
George, I agree with you, the most important thing is that we see it, we recognize it, we have a plan, and I have full faith that, that we'll, we'll make it better. But I was talking to Jack earlier, I went through this report before the meeting tonight, and overall, this is very impressive. And the administration, and, you know, Joe said, the army behind him and the army behind all of you that sit there, just good job. This is impressive, and we need to brag about what all of you are doing with our kids a lot more than, than we are.
Thank you.
So just overall, good job. I was very impressed by this.
Thank you.
So thank you. Keep it up.
I was remiss. Sheila put this on. Sheila did about 95% of it together. She did a ton of work around us.
They all do it together.
Yeah.
Anybody else have any other questions? Great, thank you so much. All right, we will move on. We have no old business tonight, but under new business, we have the adoption of our 2019-20 budget. So do I have a motion to approve the 2019-20 superintendent's proposed budget as presented? Thank you, Christine, do I have a second? Thank you, David. Do we have discussion on the budget before we vote? Yes, Alan.
I just have a question about K through three class sizes. Apparently this year, there's a little bit of a pledge in kindergarten. Is that going to be addressed in this budget?
Yeah, one of the things that will occur is the largest class size that we have is Stepney Elementary. There are up to 22 at this point, right, Bruce?
Yes, across the board.
But what happens is that would be, as we shift out, next year's fifth grade, we pick up another section. So it means that rather than having, and Bruce, correct me if I'm wrong, currently we have three kindergartens. It means next year we would have the opportunity to have four, using the current staffing that we have.
Correct.
So in case this happens again, there's a plan in place.
Right, exactly, yep.
The newsletter, we discontinued that, right?
We still continue it, but it's in a smaller format. Basically, we're trying to get, the mailing version is really trying to get to our seniors who are not so techno-savvy. We're trying to go, trying to go primarily digital, because that's the format that most people want. But we do bring hard copies over to the senior center because they prefer it that way.
You used to bring them over to the library too, you still do, or you don't?
I'm not sure about that. I don't think we do. We could, we could.
I, I think with the closing of the, Alan, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. I, I think with the closing of the courier, what I'm hearing a lot of, and, and you're right. But I think if you put on your other hat years ago, when you were in charge of IT, you'll realize every child doesn't have a laptop. I think a lot of people don't have access to any kind of information at home. And now that the courier's shut down, I'm just wondering if there is a way. No, we did it for expense, I understand that. And I, I supported that at the time. But my phone is ringing a lot, that people just don't know what, yes, they can watch if they're available. And they go on YouTube if they're available. But if not, they have no way to grab that information.
So if we got some over to Edith Wheeler?
I think that would be a help. I even think, and I hate to say this, but as you walk into the town hall toward the police, and they have a table of all the activities happening in town, who's doing what, even to drop a few there. I'm just, I'm just trying to help inform more.
Absolutely.
Dropping what there?
The newsletters.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, that wouldn't be, that wouldn't be any major cost to be easy enough to do.
In terms of that, what about putting stuff on Facebook? Like the meeting minutes, and, you know, maybe the newsletter, but especially the meeting minutes? Because a lot of parents, you know, courier's not here anymore, people, you know, don't have.
I mean, that would be really easy for us to do, actually both Facebook and Twitter. We could make that part of our, I mean, really, at this point, all of the packets are a link to another, you know, another resource, so putting that anywhere would be very easy. So that's something we could do, both Facebook and Twitter.
That would be great, thank you.
Anything else?
All right. So we have a motion to approve the 2019-20 superintendent's proposed budget as presented. All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Do we have anything else before we move on to adjournment? Do I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you, Jerry, second. Thank you, Christine. All in favor? Great, thank you, motion passes. Good evening, everybody.